Okay, this meeting of the board is now called to order. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here tonight. I just want to advise everybody that trustee Kroll sends his regrets and will not be here. And we'll start this evening by opening our budget hearing for the year 2425. And I believe Paula and Sammy are going to take us through that.
Evening Board of Ed and superintendent B. Lang. Welcome to the budget hearing for the 2425 school year.
Battery issue.
Here's the thing on the computer.
In my hand. Switch out the battery. You have the batteries here ready to go like that. I can't run into this before. Showing green. Try that. Nope. Okay, tell me when to advance the slides. How was that?
Sorry about that. Okay. As you recall from my presentation two weeks ago, or a presentation two weeks ago, I brought to you the three different proposals that have been presented. The governor's proposal, an increase in funding of approximately $241 a student, the House proposal of an increase of $217 a student, and the Senate proposal of $302 per student. My hopes and ambitions were that I would know what our state aid package was at this time of the budget hearing. But I'm sad to report, we do not have a state aid package yet. And I will explain why. They're currently in a conference committee, and they haven't even come to their target numbers yet. There's a big issue on the table that they're working through. And that has to do with the MIPsers rate. You may or may not have heard some pieces about this. I'm going to give you a high-level view of what's happening, and I'm trying not to get down into the weeds with it. But if you can recall back to 2012, there was a huge reform with the retirement system. And at that time, the state, the retirement system set up funding to take care of health insurance costs for retirees. And there were three different contribution factors that would happen for this. The state would contribute money to the OPEB fund. Districts would contribute through the retirement rate percentage that we pay on salaries. And third, if you wanted to be guaranteed health insurance at the time of retirement, as an employee, you would sign up to contribute 3% of your wages. So there were three different funding sources going into this fund for health insurance. It was predicted that it wouldn't be fully funded until the year 2038. But, to our surprise and the actuarialists, we are now fully funded in this healthcare fund at the retirement level. If you recall, the governor was wanting to allocate $670 million to fund free universal preschool. And the big chunk of that was coming from the fact that the state would not have to contribute to the healthcare insurance fund. Well, the House and Senate have different ideas on how they want that money spent. So, the Senate has introduced bill 911. Senate bill 911 would remove the requirement of the 3% that the employees had signed up for for guaranteed health insurance upon retirement. But the state would still have to make any contributions towards the OPEB fund if necessary. And then the House came along and passed bill 5803 to lower the actual liability contribution that a district would have to make based on wages earned. Lowering it from 2.96% to 13.96%. So, this topic, you may hear something about it tomorrow on the news. They've done a call for action on tomorrow's date at the Capitol. It's a big, hot topic. This is the one thing that's holding up progression of the state school aid budget. So, because of this, I still had to make a prediction. And we stuck with the $217 increase for the House proposal. But we are, by law, we must pass our budget by June 30. And the budget's filled with assumptions for enrollment, and foundation allowance, and a few other things.
So we're building a budget based on about a 2% increase?
A little over 2%. So hopefully, I'm extremely conservative, and it ends up something different. This next slide shows a history of our per pupil foundation blended funding number that we actually receive funding through Michigan Department of Ed on our state aid status reports. We receive payments 11 months out of the year. September is the only month we do not receive state aid because that's when the state of Michigan is closing their books for their annual fiscal process. This chart goes back to 2018, 19. Shows the blended history for how we have been funded through Michigan Department of Ed. And shows you my estimated 2425 blended enrollment. 10% from the spring count, which we already have, and 90% of the projected enrollment that I am predicting for the October count brings us to 8,502 students, which is a drop of just about almost 96 FTE overall. Next slide. Moving on to the assumptions that we, or assumptions that we built the general fund revenue on. As Paula had mentioned, the conservative approach. And as it's quoted, at a $217 per pupil foundation increase, bringing that per pupil foundation allowance to $9,825. We are predicting enrollment to drop to 8,502.79. Round that up to 8,503. This is a 96 FTE drop from the 2324 school year. These, so that enrollment projection is based on projections created by Janet Johnstone down in curriculum. And we also use a third-party company called Stanford that helps us with these projections. And they are projecting us to be down for a little while going forward. Next, we've built in the PPS Headley rollback for the general fund. That's 17.569 mils, and that is our operating tax. We can't levy at that full 18. But for 2425, we're experiencing no further rollback. And we will experience a loss of approximately $415,000 of property tax revenue in 2425 due to that Headley rollback. Also included in this budget, preliminary budget for revenue, is estimates for the K-RISA Special Education Millage, $7.4 million. And the enhancement millage, which is also received from K-RISA to us, for $3.9 million. We've also included on the revenue side, something that's included in all three budget recommendations. The 22L district transportation categorical was something that we did receive in the 2324 school year. Each proposal has it mentioned. One proposal changes the formula pretty drastically. But I've included a 22L state aid allocation, as well as a section 297 enrollment stabilization categorical revenue line item. What this line item does is it is intended to replace 50% of your lost enrollment overall. The state had this in their budget last year, but they could not fully fund it at 50%. They funded it at approximately 73% of the 50%. Each proposal allocates approximately the same dollar amount from this year. One budget proposal had an increase in it. So I'm pretty confident that both of these categoricals will hopefully make it through the process. And those total about $1 million in the preliminary budget that you have in your packet. Just want the board to be aware of that. So continuing on revenues, this is more of a visual of your revenues. We talk about local source revenues, and that the primary portion of that is property taxes. 55% of local sources is property taxes. And 37% of that is special education millage and the enhancement millage. The remainder of that is facility rental, curious kids, tuition, and gate receipts. One thing to keep in mind with gate receipts is that we do budget at a lower rate than usually what is expected or what happens. And that's just because we don't know what we don't know. So COVID is a perfect example. In 2020, sports stopped, no spectators, no sports. So those gate receipts were lower in 2020. So we do take that conservative approach. We'll move on to state sources. The foundation allowance is the biggest portion of the state source. That's a $62.5 million. But not only is the foundation allowance included in that, but also state categoricals. We built in the ones that we felt were a pretty good chance of being included in the state aid fund budget that we'll hopefully hear about sooner rather than later because those were built into the three recommendations. But we've also included 31A, which is at-risk, 31AA, and the MIPsers categoricals that we receive every year. Going back to that MIPsers, talking about the MIPsers categorical and also what's happening at the Capitol right now, we could see a sway in state sources because of what might happen. And that could go one way or the other. It's just really what ends up happening. It's kind of a shell game right now on what's going to happen. Going to federal sources, we taught, those include our title grants and then the federal funding from COVID. And this is the last year of that COVID funding. So that federal sources will decrease a little bit this time next year. And then incoming transfers is just our indirect from food group that we receive each year. Moving on to expenses. We kept the retirement rate the same because it is not finalized. We could possibly see a decrease. We could see it's the same. No matter what happens, we could see a big trickle effect on the budget with that. If it does, if what the Senate and the House are talking about, we could see a trickle effect on both expenditures and revenue. For insurance rates, we do know those for July through December for 2025 because those changed January 1. We built in a 6% increase. We are hearing that health insurance could go up, and that's due to the increase in usage of expensive prescriptions across the U.S. We've included increases for all employee groups. We currently have three unsettled contracts. The PEA, the education office personnel, and the bus drivers. And also included in the expenses is the 2425 curriculum adoption costs. And those are primarily the ELA Phase 1 at high school, and then Phase 3 for ELA at the elementary and middle school levels. Continuing on expenses, just more of a visual. For salaries and benefits, that equals a total of $104 million worth of our budget, which is a huge portion of our budget, as you can see. But we've also got purchased services. In that, we have budgeted for known increases for included items, such as our insurance, software contracts, the SRO contract that was brought to you the last board meeting. It also includes a small increase for ed staff employees. In the supplies and materials, we've built in building supply budgets, and that's based off of estimated enrollment projections at each building. This is where the curriculum supply costs sit, which includes textbooks, consumables, and curriculum adoption costs. It also includes year two of the library revamp, and that's being funded by the curriculum committed funding that we committed at the end of last year. Moving on to capital outlay. Each year in February, there's a big capital outlay process, and it's looked at heavily by many and many departments. And then come May, June, when those final decisions are made, those numbers come to us, and we build those into the budget for that. But that also, first, that number is usually a little bit smaller than what it is this year. So it is a little bit larger, and that's because the district-wide access control projects that we've been talking about with Section 97, and actually, why we couldn't use the front doors, that's going to be a crossing fiscal year project. So that, I did carry over some of those expenses into this year, or 2425. Moving on to the next slide. This is the one that they provide when they come out with some reports from our FID data. Just to give you an aspect, instructional expenditures, that's $74.6 million total. Pupil supports is $11.1. And then operations and maintenance is actually our third largest, and that comes in at $10.6 million. This slide is federal funding. And as we've been talking about, and we've kind of been painting the picture, September 30 of 2024 is the end of all ESER funding, all COVID funding. It's a very bittersweet ending. But there are only three grants that currently remain, and that is ESER 3, 11T, and the ARP McKinne Vento. Primarily, what's budgeted with the remainder of that money is summer learning. And that's about $1.6 million that still remains. This money has been used for some really cool projects and really cool events, and has provided some really cool opportunities to our students. So it's, I'm sad to see it leave, but it'll be okay because we have plans to continue those events going forward. This slide gives you an overview of where we ended for 2324 school year with the audit that was presented last fall. Unassigned fund balance as a percentage of expenditures came in at 14.63%. Amendment number two for the 2324 school year, those numbers have changed slightly, and I'll go into it in more detail a little bit later in the meeting. But it does show use of committed money using 11T and ESER 3 to relieve local sources and use it for special projects. But I'll go into that more a little bit later. So overall, the percentage really didn't change from the amendment that you had in your packet from two weeks ago because we were only touching grant funds. The column to the far right shows the overall snapshot of this preliminary budget for 2425 coming to the board tonight. Shows expenditures exceeding revenues by approximately $2.3 million. Included in that $2.3 million is approximately $600,000 of committed money. Keep in mind, there is no offsetting revenue account for that. It goes against the special fund balance category in the audit. Included in that overall excess of expenditures over revenues assumes those categoricals that we brought to the board earlier of approximately $1 million. Those two categoricals were 22L and 297. Based on taking the conservative approach and presenting the budget to you tonight, still shows our overall unassigned balance above the required amount of 7% for 2425 with many unknowns still out there. I would like the board to know that if our funding does come in at the governor's level of recommendation of the $9,849 per student, we would see an additional approximately $204,000 in revenue, if my enrollment number is correct. The Senate's version of funding at $9,910 would receive additional revenue of almost $723,000. So, as you know, the crystal ball, the lot of the unknowns. We give it our best bet, and we see how it lands over the summer compared to the estimates that we've made. This next slide just gives you a visual representation of what has occurred with our unassigned fund balance going back to the 1920 school year. All of the years, 1920 through 2223 are actual. Those are based on actual after the audit is complete. We are estimated to end at 14.04% for the 2324 school year. And taking into consideration the preliminary budget presented in your packet tonight would reduce us down to an overall 12.44%. So, again, just another visual tool to show you where we are at right now currently with the information that we have. That concludes the general fund portion of the budget hearing. Now we'll talk to some of the other smaller funds that were included in your board packet. As part of truth and factation, we not only talk about the operating levy, but we talk about the building site and sinking fund levy, and we talk about the debt levy. Our building site and sinking fund continues through December 31 of 2024. So it continues through this year. The building site and sinking fund experienced its first rollback, Headley rollback, in July of 2020. It went from .5 to .4988. This next year, effective July 1, it will roll back very slightly, another .0005 mils, to be levied at .4983 mils. We do plan to go to the voters in August to renew our building site and sinking fund. The projects used for the building site and sinking fund are district-wide. We're very fortunate to have this because without the building site and sinking fund, that $1.6 million worth of expenditures would have to come out of the general fund. We've included a couple additional projects that have come up in the preliminary budget for next year. Since we came to you with amendment number one for the building site and sinking fund two weeks ago, these projects are, these projects will start in the next fiscal year, such as, we need to work on the kiln exhaust projects at both 12th Street and Lake Center Elementary. And we are going to be working on an acoustical panel project for both of the auditoriums, one at Northern High and one at Central High. Currently, in the projected, in the preliminary budget, revenues are exceeding expenditures by approximately $487,000. But keep in mind, we will add projects through the year for the building site and sinking fund and bring to the board an amendment. But we also anticipate that there could be slight tax revenue shifts based on taxable value changes. So I typically don't budget that down to zero each year because I want to see what's going to happen with taxable values. So that's just being conservative. Next slide. Another big fund that we would like to talk to you about tonight is the food service fund for the 2425 school year at the state. The all three recommendations plan for free breakfast and lunch for the 2425 school year, just like in 2324. So we have that built in. But also built into this is the addition of a production manager slash catering assistant position. And that's to help Susan with catering and kind of possibly ramp up the catering that the district can provide. We expect the budget at the end of 2425 to have an excess of expenses of $713, almost $714,000. And that's primarily due to the excess fund balance projects that are currently going on. And finally, well, almost not finally, sorry. The common debt fund. This fund levies 6.85 mils. It's unchanged from last year. This is where we make our debt service payments, April 1st and November 1st. And currently, the preliminary budget shows revenues in excess of expenditures of approximately $1.7 million. I do anticipate that to change slightly again based on taxable value changes. Also, the school services fund, formerly, we refer to that as the internal fund. It's the fund where we have approximately 100 different clubs and entities, graduation classes, student council, prom accounts, all of those different things that happen through that school services, school activities fund. And then also included in your packet was our bookstore fund. Each high school does have its own bookstore, and they're ran by individual organizations. And they do receive real profits at year end. That's everything we have to bring you tonight in regards to the budget hearing. Are there any questions?
No questions, so much as a comment. But I really appreciate you taking the conservative approach that you're taking because I'd rather be surprised that we have more to spend than to plan on spending more and discover that we don't have what we had expected. Thank you.
Question. So it's really clear on the per pupil funding allowance and how you're choosing the most cautious there. Then you also said there's this issue with MIPsers. And one outcome could be that the districts would get charged much less. So that is, and I forget the number that you gave.
$450 approximately per pupil is what they're predicting. To drop from that 20.96% to 13.96%, they're saying approximately a $450 pupil savings for the district.
So.
I'm not running numbers.
Yeah, and so I missed it in there. I'm sure you said it though. But you're taking the cautious approach on that one.
Right. We did not reflect that same means of MIPsers.
But at the end of the week, we can find out that, yeah. So this is, yeah, yeah, big numbers. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, I just would like to reinforce the fact that the number you picked, the 217, is conservative. It's about 2% is what we're building our budget on. I appreciate the reminder of the 20, almost $20 million in COVID funds that we've received over the past several years. And it was good to see that expenditures are right around that 60% mark for the classroom. That's good, we're able to maintain that. And I appreciate the budget narrative and everybody who wrote a piece of that. Well, my only comment about that is there's a lot going on here. And it was, it was good to get that. It's very helpful. Thank you for all the work you put into this. Are there any comments from the audience on the proposed budget? Okay, our budget hearing is closed, and we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Didn't do revisions in agenda. If you wanted to do that after.
Nope, didn't.
Pardon?
No, you didn't do it.
Okay, I don't know if you want to do that part, go back to that part for approval of the agenda.
Oh, we didn't do that, don't we? No, we didn't do that.
I have no changes to the agenda moving forward, so.
So anxious to get into the hearing.
I know.
Is there a motion, please, on page two?
President Vinatorp, I move that the Board of Education approve the agenda as printed.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion passes, and we'll proceed with our agenda as printed. And now we're going to go to.
Now we'll go there with our bond budget, bond project update, and then we'll go right into the change order summary that's both being presented by John Edwards.
Good evening, thank you Superintendent B. Lang as well. It's the Board of Education. Just a few updates for the Central L and Haverhill construction, as well as woodland design. And then afterwards, Inesbeza project will be helping us with the change order summary. For Central Elementary School, MEP roughends continue on the second floor. They're also doing stuff framing on the second floor. We're excited to announce that roofing is projected to be completed by the end of this week. We've been very fortunate in terms of material arrival as well as favorable weather conditions to get the roofing done. At the last meeting, I mentioned that we would do some abatement work at Central L this summer. The work was competitively bid, and the numbers came in below the $100,000 threshold for board approval for service. So the work will proceed the week of July 8. Over at Haverhill, the contractors were creating the entrance and exits for the new bus loop on the south side of the school. Therefore, we had to block off a couple of intersections at Marlowe and Manhattan Street. The Marlowe intersection is complete, and it is also ADA compliant. The Manhattan Street intersection will be completed this week. In terms of the school interior, the framing, interior framing continues, and roughends continue. The roof still will be done in the next two weeks. And then the installation of the brick on the building continues. Third, and finally, in terms of woodland design, since our last board meeting, we received lots of positive feedback about the unveiling of the woodland design. We also held our fourth design development meeting a couple of weeks ago. At that meeting, we reviewed all of the landscaping, the site design, the exterior facade, interior spaces like the library, main office, educator workshops, and learning studios. The fifth design and development meeting will take place on Thursday afternoon. So that concludes my bond project update. Before we go to the board, the bond summary, change order summary. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have in terms of construction. And also just to remind those who are available on Wednesday at 4:30 will go sight visit over at Central L. And maybe later in the summer, if not fall. And maybe later in the summer, if not fall, Haverhill will be in a good place to take a tour. All right. Anastasia will lead us through the change order.
Thanks, Johnny. Good evening, everyone. We'll get started with your construction cost summary, this cover sheet. As a reminder, as we go through this process, you will see the money moving out of the contingency fund there up to the correct construction costs. So the second sheet gives the detail of what we have on the cover sheet here. We'll move over to the detail page, starting with Central Elementary, Item 1, which was cutting of five canopy support columns. This was after the foundation work had already started. There was some structural engineering foundation changes that we needed some field coordination with cutting those to get everything to line up. Item 2, the bearing condition crack. There was some cracking in the block due to both ends of a large beam being welded. This was when temperatures were still fluctuating quite a bit. So we would see the lower temperatures at night, and it would warm up with the sun. So it created this environment change where the block started to crack. So that was the cost to repair that. Item 3, temporary enclosure of soffit and fascia due to abatement of panels on existing building. This is what Johnny touched on a little bit in terms of enclosing the current building from any weather bugs, that sort of thing. So Central change order for contingency cost was $57,587. Moving on to Haverhill, Item 1, Bulletin 5, which included revisions to the masonry to conceal some columns, foring to clean up electrical outlets in the casework, electrical changes addressing equipment requirements per code. That one had a cost of $5,605 and affected four contractors. Item 2, we used an allowance of $4,332. We had to add some additional crushed stone to allow the crane access to the building. That one affected one contractor. Item 3, which was Bulletin 6, included adding new raw cold water piping throughout the building to the exterior hose bibs, and also added power cord reels to classrooms for a cost of $62,225, and that one affected five contractors. Last item for Haverhill is Bulletin 7, Item 5. This was due to Consumers Energy, they relocated how they were pulling power to the buildings. You will also see this on Central as well. This was across both buildings where the, the change had to be made. So instead of consumers bringing, them bringing the power completely to the building, they're now bringing it to the power, to the property line. So we are regarding the rest of the way. That was a cost of $95,375 and affected one contractor. Haverhill's change order for totals, $163,205.
Later in the meeting, the recommendation for that same item for Central L will be discussed, and that cost the $100,000 threshold in terms of our board policy. So later on, that same example that she described, the Haverhill took place at Central L, will be taking place at Central L. The difference would be, the difference of cost, Haverhill's $95,000, Central L is
So Johnny, you haven't listed it on here because it's over $100,000, and we haven't approved it yet.
Correct. So therefore, it's not in the current summary at this moment.
So that one, if approved, you can see on the next bond change order report.
Yep.
That's a really good illustration of our policy regarding the change orders because normally it doesn't go over $100,000, and normally it doesn't come to the board. So we're following our policy, and that's a good thing. Thank you.
Thank you. So just an overall question about contingency use. So you're feeling comfortable with the rate we're using contingency? That's kind of my blanket question.
Yeah.
We're, we're using it at appropriate pace, and there's going to be plenty there to get us through.
Absolutely. You know, I kind of look at it this way. Our goal is, if you want to say we're roughly halfway there now this summer, then summer will be closer to the finish line. So if you look at it from that perspective, we have not surpassed a large percentage of the contingency thus far. And our goal is that our risk for contingency continue to decline as we get closer to completion.
Just, I mean, quick math here. You're maybe 20% or certainly less than 25% into the contingency.
Correct.
Could be any other questions for us?
Can I ask you a curious real quick? The power cord reels, what are those?
Yeah, I think this is related to art rooms in both, in both schools. But essentially, what we, what we're adding, oh, I shouldn't say adding, but what we're including is, in the art rooms, we'll have power cords that the teacher can use to retract down for power for different equipment with our classrooms. So that's a nice piece, obviously, not having something like that in the floor.
Trip hazard.
Correct. And so basically, without getting too technical, the teacher will be able to lower them when needed for certain products and keep them in the ceiling if they're not needed.
A little more accessible for those with disabilities, mobility disabilities, so. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The third report is Math Law Report. So Dr. Pascoe is presenting that one.
All right, good evening Superintendent B. Lang. I'm here to present the annual Math Law Report, which is our bullying data for 23-24 school year. If you look at one of the last pages of your report, you'll find the bullying data collected from this past year, as well as what was collected in 22-23. So you can kind of take a look at a two-year comparison of what we've been. The top of the table shows a summary of what was reported at each school level and the disposition that the school took, and then the total number of referrals you'll see in the top right. So we do see a slight increase from the previous year, 143 to 151, anywhere from one to five referrals at any given level. We continue to see that males engage more in this behavior than females, as we have in the past, and with the most frequency at grades 6 to 10, with the largest increase at 6th grade, and then 16 to 24. I will note that between CMS and West Middle School, those are two of our larger 6th grade cohorts, as we're looking at enrollment. So that might have something to do with it, there's just a lot, a lot more kids within those grade levels that we may be able to attribute that to. We also see that 103 of the 151 offenses resulted in some type of suspension, whether that be in school or out of school, with a higher number being out of school, 57 compared to the 46 in-school suspension. And we see that 151 referrals were committed by 115 students, and we did have repeat offenders throughout the school year. And when talking to our leadership team to kind of know, you know, maybe what they can attribute the slight increase to, a few of our leaders had said they're doing what they feel is a better job educating students on the different types and levels of harassment, and also empowering them to report incidences when they happen. So I guess to turn a slight increase into a positive is that our kids are feeling more confident, and the relationships are there, trusted adults that they can go to, to report when things aren't right. And so I just wanted to, to put that in there. So that's the numbers between the last two years. More importantly is, is what are we doing, what do we continue to do to address bullying in our schools, and looking at some of our research-based strategies. PBIS is always a big one, and PPS, you know, effectively teaching appropriate behavior, setting expectations, intervening early, using interventions whenever possible, and monitoring student progress throughout the year. And in that, we use a lot of data to inform our decisions. You hear us talk a lot about our continuous improvement efforts, particularly around our strategy, culture, and climate, focusing on positive relationships, MTSS, that's our multi-tier systems of support for both behavior and academics, as well as social-emotional learning competencies. Restored practices, we're getting better at that. It's an alternative approach to punitive consequences and discipline, where we have our students take ownership of their actions, recognize the impact that they have on others. So we're getting better at that. We've partnered with Griffin Place to do a lot of that work. They work alongside us and have provided all of our buildings training with that. Cognitive behavior therapy, you've heard me talk about that in the past, that helps students develop strategies to solve problems and regulate their emotions. So that's happened throughout the year. It's usually a six to eight week cycle. Some of the students are identified through our screener called Sabers, as well as information that we get from our school psychs, counselors, and our engagement specialists. And then we do a lot around trauma-informed schools training. It helps increase the staff awareness around the impact of trauma and provide them with some skills, as well as some awareness of what some of our students may be coming to school with from a day-to-day perspective. Now, thanks to Dr. Sheen, we had a session this, in the last month or so, around anti-bias and anti-racism through the Erase Training, which was wonderful. We had a large group go through, particularly a lot of folks that are behind the new implementation of the ELA curriculum. So that was, that was wonderful to go through that, just creating awareness, self-reflecting on our own potential biases that we may carry. So we'll continue to do a lot more of that as the years go on. We talked about C-STAG and the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guideline, the consistent approach to identifying threats and addressing some of the concerns that students are presenting themselves with. And a lot of times, it's just them calling out for, a cry for help, in a way to notify adults in the building so that therefore we can put some systems and supports in place to help them get to a better spot. Okay to say is through the Michigan State Police, it's an anonymous reporting system that we utilize quite frequently. Our principals, myself, our SROs, as well as Dr. Gensinius get the notifications. We follow up with any information that gets passed to help prevent any type of bullying or threats that may happen in our schools. And then one of the biggest ones is the implementation of our new ELA curriculum. It's allowing more students to connect to what's being taught in the classroom, promotes the appreciation of different perspectives, cultures, and experiences. A few of us in the room have had a few opportunities to go and visit some of the early adopting classrooms and how engaged students are. It's really wonderful. So thanks to Dr. Gensinius, Dr. Sheen, and our instructional coaches, for helping move that along, as well as our reading specialists. That is going to help a lot with these type of reports, I believe, moving forward. Those are some of the things that we have in place. That's all I had for you this evening. So if you have any questions or comments, and welcome to hear another time.
So the Erase Training was for staff, for teachers?
We had teachers in there, I don't know who else. We had some administrators, a few exec team. Johnny joined us, myself, I believe Brad may have stopped by. Dr. Gensinius was there as well. Kind of just a good start to.
The half day or the two and a half day?
The full day.
Okay, the one day option.
The one day.
Okay.
And so that's just the first call. We want to have a good group of employees, we want to have some respect.
I have one quick question. When does the bullying get to the level of detention? Is it, you know, the repeat offenders do it like five times, and you get a detention? Or is it the severity of the bullying? How is that determined?
Would you answer that elementary level?
At elementary, it's definitely that case by case, but there is, you know, we, it's a lot of teaching, right? Like when kids come in, even like kindergarten, and is it bullying? Is it being mean? You know, kind of going through all of that. But when they, if they make their way to the office especially, we talk through what's been going on. Is it repeated? Is it the same kid? Is it a different kid? And so really, as you know, at elementary, you're really like trying to pick out like what's really happening here. If we find that it is the same kid doing the same thing to that same student back and forth, and it just keeps happening, it's not about like, oh, it's been five times now. Like as soon as we realize, like, wait, there's a pattern of behavior here, then that's like quickly into action on, like you say, okay, now we're hitting the bullying. But no matter what, like that first time it happens, we're, we're addressing it, we're talking with the kids, we're saying, this is not okay, like what can we do to support? How can we walk you through this? How can we maybe even come to like understanding? Like a lot of times, what I've always found was typically misunderstanding from littles, like he said this, and I said this, well, then I didn't realize he said that, because if he would have. So it's, there's a lot that goes on. But if it truly is somebody really being mean to somebody repeatedly at elementary, we work through that piece, and we talk with the parents, we talk on both sides, talk with the kids, we do a little training and support. It's pretty intensive that way. But really, at the end of the day, we're really trying to get kids to work together and be together and move forward from it and learn together. Because that's, they got to be with each other, so how do we help that? As they get older, it's similar.
That's why you see the in-school or out-of-school suspension as a response, because usually at that point, it's got to the point where the detentions and some of the, maybe the first approaches to addressing it just have not been effective, or it's become greater and greater, and there's more of an impact on maybe the victim or the other student, or students, sometimes the students. So that's why you may see the variance in approach. But usually, it's kind of the level of severity and the frequency, like Dr. Gensinius just said.
There's a certain kid that continues to do it to multiple kids, right? You start seeing patterns of behavior, and then your, your consequences will change, right? Your response changes and adapts to the situation.
I want to have you up here. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Dr. Pascoe. We'll move into the board education piece, and the first one is a leftover federal requirement that we present our continuity of services plan to the board. This hopefully is the last one that we'll have to do by law, so that's why we're here with this report again this evening.
Thanks, Superintendent B. Lang. My colleague here, Dr. Gensinius, with me for this report. So tonight, we'll look at the final 23-24 update of our continuity of services plan. So the District Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuity of Services Plan, that was developed, if you remember, way back in 21-22, and that was mandated by the MDE, Michigan Department of Education, and had connection to the federal funding requirements. The plan described how we, as Portage Public Schools, would ensure the continuity of services, which had to address students' academic needs and students and staff's social, emotional, mental health, as well as other needs that were there at the time. The plan was updated as required by the MDE, and it was posted continuously on our district website. We just want to note that 98B has been repealed. This means that there is no requirement to set building level goals based off of benchmark data. As Mark alluded to, no reporting at board meetings in February and June on the plan progress, and no posting of the plans and data to district transparency webpages, as we have done over the last few years. However, we have still included the benchmark data for this past school year. Additional information is fulfilling the requirements and updates of the Continuity of Services Plan. So note that this will be our final report for these purposes. So as a final update to the Continuity of Services Plan, we ended the 23-24 school year, committed to keeping our students and staff safe. We continue to provide in-person instruction, and we follow the guidance from the Kalamazoo County Health Department with any COVID-related guidance as we work through the school year. So I'll hand it over to Dr. Gensinius, as she talks a little bit more about our elementary data.
Thank you. So as Dr. Pascoe stated, that 98B part was repealed through that state requirement. However, we did feel it was important to share this year's final benchmark data with you. It just felt like a good wrap-up to all of this for you. So this first table here that we'll look at is the elementary math and reading screener data that we completed towards the end of the year for that spring screening cycle. Just note that this is not cohort data, meaning that we would have had kids that come in, come out throughout the year that were included in this data set. And that is a curriculum-based measure, so that kind of moves up and down with meeting benchmarks. So we're trying to chase that, that from beginning to end of year. But the goal was, and always is, to get our K8, to have 80% of students to benchmark by the end of the school year in both reading and math. As you can see here in math, screening data, we did see that second, third, and fifth grade, they were making our largest gains from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. I think it's important to note, while we didn't hit that 80%, we really have been anchoring our work in that form. we really have been anchoring our work in that formative assessment process throughout the year. Each of our elementary buildings have three teachers working alongside Jessica Win Stanley, who is our instructional coach, and as well as our regional FAME coach. And the FAME coach is the formative assessment for Michigan educators. She would come in and support that work and do some training with Jessica and the team. So, they really gained a lot of great understanding of formative assessment, and then build that out within their grade-level teams. And we've anchored that into that mathematics lens, because we knew, as we all, we've talked about many times, we really want to keep building that, that understanding with math and how to teach math and assess it better. So, we are, as you know, in that math curriculum review cycle, K-12, and we're in that first phase. And Dr. Sheehan's been leading that this summer, the first two weeks of summer. So, we got a lot of momentum from those two weeks. And so, we're excited to see the next phase of that. But if you look next into our reading data on that same chart, you will notice that there is movement, movement in the majority of our grade levels. The elementary grade-level teams have been intentionally setting their goals on their data starting from that fall screener cycle. Those goals are supported by teams developing their instructional routines that really hit the area in which they're trying to target. And that's tied to priorities, a particular priority standard. We saw a lot of good growth happening at kindergarten, first, and fifth grade. And as we mentioned throughout this year through MR1, we have a lot of teachers going through rigorous letters training. So, they're still engaging in that work. And then they're learning how to use the new Ufly at the lower elementary. And they started a new curriculum this year with our early adopters. And with all of that, we know new implementation takes time to start to see results. But I do think it's important to highlight here that we're proud of is that these, while the overall scores aren't hitting that 80%, we do have sub-score areas where we are making that. So, for instance, in retell, in first, third, fourth, and fifth grade, we were all over the 80%. So, that was great, so they were able to read something and be able to retell in a clear way. In accuracy, in fourth grade, that was over 80%, so they got higher accuracy. If anyone knows that's really, don't need them to read really quickly. We need them to read accurately. Yeah, see? And as they get older, those multi-syllabic words, the accuracy starts to go down. But we can get it back up with phonics instruction. And then in kindergarten, our phoneme segmentation fluency, so breaking it apart, that was over 80%. And then whole words read in first grade, we were over 80% as well. So, we have really good bright spots happening in different grade levels throughout the district at the elementary level. And we're really proud of that, but also know, we're still working towards hitting. And we monitor this, no matter what, if it comes to the board or not, this is the work that we do every year, all the time, that we anchor instructional work into at the elementary especially, so that we can keep making sure kids are hitting what they need to at that point in reading. So, what Dr. Pascoe will do now is highlight the six through eight data and some of the important moves that we've made.
So, this next table focused on middle school math and reading data. Meeting benchmark changes by the time of year for FastBridge. And the benchmark is a curriculum-based measure, as well as an adaptive assessment. So, we use these assessments or measures to determine where our students are at as a whole and what instructional moves we may need to make. This is because the screener is essentially just a snapshot in time. So, adaptive, and we've defined that in the past, as any type of assessment that's tailored specifically to each student. So, based on their performance on the items on the screener, the test will adapt in terms of what questions they're given. So, in math, we continue to see our sixth-grade trend downwards from the fall to the spring, whereas seventh and eighth grade remained flat, just around 61%. So, Laura Cleesby, that's our math coach, six through eight, continues to work with her building teams to review and analyze the data. She's doing a wonderful job with that. She's helping our teachers better understand FastBridge as a screening tool. She's been instrumental in district data reviews and supporting our math teachers to adjust instructional practices and assist with alignment, particularly around standards and how that correlates with MSTA and PSAT8. So, she's doing a lot of wonderful work there, which we appreciate. In reading, we see our sixth-grade dip slightly and remaining consistent in both seventh and eighth grade around 69%. We're still falling short of meeting the benchmark at 80%, Kelly said. But similar to elementary, this is just overall data. But when you begin to look a little deeper, you do see some positive improvements in here, which you don't necessarily see in some of the tables and graphs that we show. So, middle school also uses the FastBridge math automaticity and auto-reading screeners. But we report AMATH and AREADING since they're broader-range tests for these purposes. So, there's a bit of positivity here with seventh grade auto-reading hitting 81%. Eighth grade automaticity comes close at 79%. But that's down overall from, for the year. Auto-reading showed about 2% to 6% growth over the sixth through eighth grade, while automaticity only showed growth in sixth grade. So, within the data, there's some positive highlights that we can share with our teams that they can build on. So, we've got a lot of great changes in store for our students, led by our outstanding middle school teachers and supported by instructional coaches through the CIA office. We know it takes time. I keep hearing from Jessica Win Stanley and Courtney Huff, as well as Dr. Sheehan, that things take three to four years, which I believe. But we're proud of the work that our teachers are doing and their coaches are engaged in to improve our curriculum and meet the needs of all of our learners. So, finally, overall, as we've begun to analyze the data from the end-of-the-year screening, and we acknowledge that the district-wide, we have not met our goal set for 2023-24. We spent the past year engaging in K-12 ELA math curriculum reviews, like ELA as well as math, as Kelly just said. We're advocating us to continue to grow our practices and improve these outcomes. This particular report should be the last one that we present to you as a board due to being directly related to MDE and some of the federal funding report requirements, as Paula and Sammy just mentioned, some of that going away now. We however, look forward to continuing to provide you updates and progress of our students through MR1-1 and 24-25 school year and beyond. So, that's kind of the closure to continuity of services plan. So, I'd love to hear any questions or comments that the board may have at this time.
Thank you for providing the bright spots. A number's a number, but there's so much more to it than that little number gives. It's really exciting to see the progress that's being made.
Thank you.
Do the questions get more difficult, like, throughout the year? Is that why maybe it gets harder for students than the percentages dropped? Or are they all like weighed the same throughout?
So, our screener expert here would probably be more, you know, answer that in a clear way.
They do, it's a changing target, a changing benchmark. So, new concepts coming to play, different standards are assessed at different times. And so, it does change, in a sense, gets harder as the year goes on. So, that is some of it. But we should see the students growing at the same pace that it does get harder, because it's a curriculum-based measure. So, it's nationally-normed. We should see it move with the student, or the students move with it, so that it's not really an excuse we inspire ourselves to say it's okay. But, but it is a factor.
Michael, I think you addressed this at the end, but, so, the FastBridge and Acadia's data, that flows through our 1.1 reports that we will be seeing next fall. So, we're going to get another shot at this, but it's going to be coming through in the context of 1.1.
Yeah, so we don't break it all the way apart like this did. This was part of that requirement, but we take a snapshot of, I think it's like, what, fifth grade? We show you eighth grade. We show you snapshots of it.
You mentioned three to four years to make it work. I know FastBridge is relatively recent that we have been using that as a district. Is that what you're referring to with the three to four years of how to use it? Or are you referring to it, the curriculum?
An implement, implementation dip. So, anytime you implement something new, you'll see like great excitement and training and all that. But the implementation of it, you'll see things go down. And then we work on coaching and training and supports and working out the hard parts, right? There's always those difficult pieces. And then, then you see it start to go up. So, as long as we got the right supports in place, teachers are getting what they need. It's, we tweak it as needed, we should then start to see that go up.
And so, to some extent, this is expected. And we're really not seeing downward trend, especially with the benchmark raising every time that they're looking at the screener. That's good. They're, they're still growing. There's, even though the number, the percentage isn't growing, the students are still gaining knowledge and are still growing.
Yeah, new content for teachers to plan for, new instructional practices and delivery. And then, that usually drives, you know, different approaches to assessment. So, I think that's part of the whole three to five-year span that the folks in the CIA office always talk about. There's so much to it that it just takes time to build that capacity.
Thank you for that clarification. It makes, it makes sense.
Thank you. So, the second piece now coming up on board education is, as you know, we have our, we had our early adopters for the English Language Arts curriculum that we've been working on this year. And so, Mackenzie's here to give you a, an update on that and some of their findings.
So, good evening. I'm excited just to share these findings with you. This has been a great process. So, one of the things that we heard from both you and our teams was we wanted to make sure and gather feedback this year specifically from our families, just what, what they were seeing, what they were hearing. And so, tonight, I'm going to be sharing just what we found out from the gathering of that data, but then also the action steps that go along with it. And so, just to remind you, at K-5, we were doing an early adopter model, which we actually found extremely useful. And we've been discussing whether or not to move that early adopter model onto other curriculum cycles as we go through it, just because it's been so beneficial to learn from a small group of people starting to go through a new resource and new ways of teaching. And so, then we can learn how to scale that up versus everybody maybe experiencing something together that we didn't expect. And so, that was the K-5 model. We had at least three teachers per grade. And then in 6-8, we had four adopters. So, at K-5, we ended up hearing from 243 families on the survey, and at 6-8, 248 families. And so, we felt like this was a pretty good pool to at least get an initial look from. The survey was sent through the teachers to their families, and we found that the best method, just because there was only specific classrooms at K-5 that were doing it, and we didn't want to confuse any parents. Because we did find that some of the parents didn't know that there was a new curriculum that their students were experiencing. So, we were happy with those numbers. We also requested that the teachers share some of their students' feedback from us, whether it be audio, written, visual. And so, that was a lot of fun, receiving that all year long and hearing about what different students were doing. The survey categories that we used were asking families about students sharing their experience at home, the perception of, from the family, if they were growing in ELA. And then students, if they were learning in other content areas. And then what the families needed in addition to what they were getting through supports. So, I'll go through each one of these very quickly. But the first category we asked about was, are they sharing what they're learning at home? So, 63% of all the families that reported and said that their students were sharing what they were learning in ELA at home, which we were thrilled to hear just because some of the things, some of the factors that we see is that as they get older, they seem to maybe share less. And that's an assumption we were making beforehand. We saw that come true. And, but even at eighth grade, still 57% of the students were sharing when it, when we looked at just eighth grade. I have a quote up here from one of, one of our families that I felt like represented some of the other comments that we did get. And it was specifically around how these units seem more interesting and engaging than what their daughter has experienced from her whole elementary career. And we did hear that echoed probably through a dozen or more families, specific to some of the upper elementary and even into middle school. So, that was extremely exciting for our coaches. And so, one of the things that we did hear throughout, that you'll see a little bit later, is we heard that families wanted more information on how they could help and support. And that really came up in that family section that I'll address in a little. But what we did is we actually added some major parts to our family letters that would go home with every single unit. So, as soon as we heard that feedback, we absolutely knew that our theory about, maybe we should add a few more things, that was in play. And so, this summer, for the last two weeks, we've had groups actually going on there and making sure that all of the family letters for every single unit have all these components, including vocabulary, conversation starters, suggestions for books to read at home. And so, it's been exciting to watch these get ready to be let loose to everyone next year. The next category that we looked at is the perception of growth from parents. And so, this was really probably our most interesting category, just because we heard from, from several parents that they didn't see products coming home, which is actually completely normal for the stage that we're in, just in education right now. A lot of it is done on Google Classroom or digitally. And so, one of the things that we started pushing right when we got the first surveys back, which was late winter, was make sure your, any, any type of paper product that they're doing, start sending it home when you can, just because it was creating more of a connection. So, that's one thing we'll be emphasizing again this next year. But what we found is there was kind of two, two strong voices, and it was about a 50-50 of what we saw. And that was specifically at middle school, we would see a quote like this, where they have a student who's skeptical of what was about to happen with the removal of ELA+ in this new curriculum, but surprised at the rigor, the content, and the challenge that came to their student. So, that was about 50%. The other 50% were more like this. My student is frustrated at the pacing of the lessons and the lack of materials presented. So, when we sent the survey, it was a very quick realization as we started to get comments rolling back in that our pacing was way off. And we had, we've had coaches who had started sensing this. And they're like, why is this first, like, why is this taking so long? Like, what are they doing? And we, we finally sat a group down and really kneeled down what was happening. And it came down to the way that the lesson was structured. Teachers, this was a new way of teaching, and they were very uncomfortable with going through it. So, we went right into coaching mode and pacing mode. So, our action steps have really been, what I first mentioned, communicating the push of materials to home. But then the summer, we're concentrated solely on pacing out every single unit. And so, we have now a very distinct like timeline for each unit. And, and then also kind of an assessment guide that helped move a little bit quickly, more quickly through it. So, it resulted, the fact that we had this big split, that helped us realize what was going on in the middle of the year. And so, now, if we took the pulse at the end of the year, that idea of pacing should've, I mean, they picked up a very quick pace to make it through the rest of the units. And we did make it through everything, but not in the way that we wanted to. So, for next year, we're very confident going into it that we will be on track with everyone because of the pacing. And then, the third category was really looking at, do you think you're seeing it learning ELA along with other subject areas? Because that's something that's very, should be very recognizable within a knowledge-building curriculum. And 64% of families believe that their students were learning in other subject areas along with ELA. There were a few comments in this, and when I say a few, it really was just about 6% that, that still disagreed with maybe some of the topics around diversity or other people's stories coming up. And so, we do have those comments, and we acknowledge them. But the majority weighed in on being excited about what was happening, being excited that we were teaching different historical events and different social studies concepts within our ELA curriculum, and tying those two together, because it's easier for students to get excited and learn and remember. And then the very last thing is we gave families some options of how you would like to see more support. Specifically, the two highest categories were the Home Connections, which I already talked about in the family letters, and then book suggestions for each unit. So, that's something the librarians have partnered with us on and made sure that we did pick out some good titles to add to those family lists and check to make sure they were at the Portage District Library. But some of the other ones that we asked them about were conversation starters- online resources, only 2% said that they wanted any type of connection with an online resource. And then Letters Home, we were already sending, so that percentage was low too. But our next action step that was in this category that kind of popped through some of the comments was the idea of, we want to know more about what you're discussing when there is something that seems to be sensitive. And so we've added any unit that has a controversial or sensitive topic in it. We do have a statement to the family that's very clear and very, very just laid out of what the teacher is doing or the framework they're using when they are discussing something with students, whether that's class agreements or how we go about discussing depth and how it's structured. But we want to be as transparent as possible so families know what to expect. And there's always who you can contact for more information on it as well. Now, looking forward to 24-25, we are extremely excited to say we are bringing back the Family Literacy Night. And so that will be on Thursday, August 22nd, at the Portage District Library once again, from 6:00 to 7:30. And we'll send out more information about that soon. We're still in the planning stages with them. But really, except for that, it's been the last two weeks of curriculum work that we've really nailed down some of the tweaks and changes with pacing and assessments. In eighth grade, we, once they pasted out, we found out they had time to do a little mini short story unit, or no, sorry, short stories unit with a little research project. So that's one thing we're still working on putting together. But that's really, that itself is the only major change that we came across that we felt we needed to add. And so nothing, we are excited to see everything pays out really well. But we are excited that we are going into full adoption mode with elementary. And we will definitely have more data for you in the future on how parents and families and guardians are perceiving that it's going. And next time, we would love to bring to some of the future perspective, because it's pretty amazing to hear them talk about what they're seeing in writing and the discourse, the discussion the students are having. And if any of you had the opportunity to go into any of their classrooms, I know every time we walk in, we're pretty amazed just at where the students are just stepping up and surprising us. But I am here for any comments or questions you have about what we've received and our action steps moving forward.
This is fantastic. Obviously, we all know I had some challenges when we were adopting this. And I'm really appreciative about how well you've approached the challenging subjects and communicating with the families. And I think that's great. I think your team's doing a phenomenal job.
One of my big concerns early on was that kids would, here at school, things that disagreed with their parents and that it would draw division. And what you have done here with these family letters by highlighting potentially controversial topics, additional reading, ways to research, you've brought that together. You have eliminated that as a concern by giving parents the opportunity to then add this to a discussion at home and really increase their connectedness with the children. And thank you. That is amazing work you did. It's fantastic.
We've got a lot of team members behind this, just really doing a lot of research, just doing a lot of conversations and being willing to talk to families and parents and community members when they do have a question. And I think that that open dialogue has helped a lot. And we've learned a lot from this experience, so.
It started with your literacy night, and you've continued that and are showing evidence that you are continuing to continue that. Thank you.
I just really appreciate this. I suspect I'm not the only trustee who heard in the last year apparent concerns about middle school ELA, right? Hearing those concerns. And so, you know, I always love it when I have this thing in the back of my head and you beat me to it, which is to ask for kind of a review. And so you gave it to us tonight. And I really give credit when you put the good and the critical up there. So I mean, appreciate seeing the feedback of, you know, some are saying it's not rigorous enough. And you've identified the tweak to it. And I would just say what I heard you say at the end, which is, this is a cycle. And you're going to keep your ear to the parents on this and keep working this.
Absolutely. I mean, we're curious to know, just as we make sure that the pacing is correct, or at least that it makes sense and that students feel like it is supposed to be felt, that we will see a change in those parents that are questioning it and the family members. But I will say, like, when we realized what was happening, just with the, even from the student perspective, we completely understand why those comments were in there. And so it just helped us get more justification to why we had to make some adjustments that were a little painful in the middle of the year. And it was okay. It was good.
You mentioned that you're using transparency. I like that word that you use. But I would say that you're also using accountability.
Well, our students deserve it. And so, thank you. And thank you guys for just being willing, as those questions come your way, to have those discussions.
Thank you very much. That was very good board education. We appreciate it. Thank you.
And this is a good illustration of the level of professionalism that we're dealing with with our administrators. So thank you very much for all you do in terms of taking initiative, listening, doing all the research, and bringing forward the best stuff that you can find.
Okay. We'll move to our comments and communications section. I don't believe we have anyone who wishes to speak to the board this evening. Are there any comments from trustees?
Happy summer.
To all our teachers and students.
Any board committee reports? Okay, very good. We'll move to the consent agenda on page 16. There's five items this evening. The first is approval of the minutes from the January 10th, 2024 Committee of the Whole Work Session and Close Session. The second is to approve the 2026 Central High School Student Trip to France as presented. The third is to approve membership renewal to the Michigan Association of School Boards for 24-25 for a renewal total of $10,406.57. The fourth item is to approve the School Resource Officer Agreement with the City of Portage for the period July 1st, 2024 through June 30, 2027, in the annual amount of $127,000, $112.36, the funding for which will come from the General Fund. And finally, to approve revisions to N's Policy 1.0 that recognizes long-term continuous improvement, measuring growth and proficiency, and comparing Portage Public Schools to like schools around the state and within Kalamazoo County. Are there any exceptions to the consent agenda as presented? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved and will move to page 46 to our first required action item, and that's the amended budget appropriations resolutions for 22, 23, for 20, 23 and 24. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the resolutions for the General Fund, Debt Retirement Fund, Building and Site Sinking Fund, and School Service Funds Budgets for 2023-24 as presented.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Is there any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The amended budget appropriations resolution passes. Our next required action item is on page 63. And it's asking us to approve the 2024-25 budget resolutions. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the resolutions for the General Fund, Debt Retirement Fund, Building and Site Sinking Fund, and School Services Funds Budgets for the 2024-25 school year as presented.
Thank you. Bowser, second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry. Any discussion?
I would just point out, there's no discussion here because we've had this about three times now, very thoroughly, and feeling comfortable with it.
For sure. Okay, all those in favor of approving the 24-25 budget resolutions, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes and the resolutions are approved. Turning to page 77, our third required action item is a resolution to set the 2024 tax rates. Is there a motion, please?
President Van Antwerp, I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to set 2024 tax rates for summer and winter taxes as presented.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Thank you, Bow. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the 2024 tax rates for summer and winter taxes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The motion passes and is approved. Our first action item is on page 80, and that's Commitment of Funds Transfer, the Commitment of Funds Resolution. And Paula's going to explain this one to us.
This is something that you are familiar with, is something very similar to what we did last June. Good evening, Board of Education. Superintendent Beiling, I recommend that the Board of Education adapt the resolution in your board packet tonight to commit local source revenues that have been legally supplanted by the use of SRR3 and 11T equalization funding in the amount not to exceed $1,627,000. Just a little bit of background information that was included in your packet. We want to take full advantage of the SRR3 and 11T dollars. And with the end date of September 30th coming, through our year-end close process, we can legally supplant some expenditures, relieve those local sources, commit that money to use it past September 30th. So inclusion in your board packet is a resolution to accomplish that process. You will see it as a separate line item in the bond balance designation area of your financial report. And we're going to use it for funding that will be used for before and after school programs, such as tutoring opportunities, mentor programs, summer learning camps. So it's all items that are going to benefit students.
This is, you know, learning recovery and other student support. So we're setting some monies aside to do that.
All good. Thank you, Paula. Is there a motion, please, on page 80?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution to commit local source revenue that has been legally supplanted by SRR3 in Section 11T equalization funding in the amount not to exceed $1,627,000 as presented.
Thank you, Emily. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion at all? All those in favor of approving the Commitment of Funds Resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution is approved. Our next action item is the curriculum purchase for 24-25 on page 84. Is there a motion, please?
Well, you go ahead.
I got the short straw. Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the purchase of curriculum materials for the 2024-25 school year, which includes tax, renewal of specific course materials, intervention materials, and consumable tax for grades young fives through 12th grade for the not to exceed total of $320,000, the funds for which will come from the 24-25 General Fund.
Thank you, Bowser. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry.
Yes.
The line here today, once again, just to recommend that we, that you approve the purchase for those curriculum materials for the 24-25 school year. This is a yearly event that we get to do together just for the board to have the awareness of what's being purchased for the next school year. But because we are purchasing these different items through a combination of using savings cooperatives and competitive quoting, it's not a bid process. And so, but the total amount exceeds the board's required threshold. So that is why it's necessary to get board approval for the amount. But as you can see, the total is not to exceed the $320,000. And it is for the replacement of those tucks that we replace each year, any materials, specific intervention materials, and the renewal of specific course materials, which this year is mostly online subscriptions that go with current books that we have. But to allow us in order, to allow us to have time to order for the next school year, I ask that you review this recommendation and that the Board of Education would move this item to an action.
And yes, it is. Thank you. Is there any discussion?
No.
All those in favor of approving the curriculum purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Curriculum purchase is approved. Thank you. Our next action item is the Central Elementary Electrical Services Reroute. And there's a motion on page 86, please.
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve a change order contract with Circuit Electric in the amount of $167,765 for the Central Elementary Bond Construction Project, the funds for which will come from the 2021 Bond Fund.
Thank you, Kimberly. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Emily. Yes.
As we discussed earlier, Anastasia mentioned, this is related to a change with consumers' power and energy. And the amount exceeds the $100,000 threshold for purchase of a service. Also, there's one additional contractor impacted by this change order, and that's Lonsbury Escavating. That change order would be $1,930. Central Elementary Schools, this particular change order, again, crosses the $100,000 threshold. Abraham Hill Change Order, which is on the summary, is under $100,000. Anastasia, I'd be happy to answer any other questions the board might have.
I guess when consumers' power changes or consumers' energy changes, what they're going to do? We just got to roll.
Yeah.
We're rolling the punch. We got to find the money.
School needs power.
We got to have power.
I will say, we have learned, Tower has mentioned that, you know, they've learned from this and applying what we know to the future projects, so. Best we can with consumers.
Any other questions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the Central Elementary Electrical Services Reroute, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Next is the retiree proclamation on page 90. Is there a motion, please?
President Van Antwerp, I move that the Board of Education approve the 2023-24 retiree proclamation as presented.
Thank you, Terry. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. This is a proclamation for recognition and commendation for retiring employees. And in this case, it's Tammy Carmen Hoffman, the Curious Kids Administrator. Whereas the following certified and classified employee has announced her intentions to retire from Portage Public Schools. Whereas this individual has faithfully served and supported the students and staff of this community. And whereas this individual supported great teaching and learning in classrooms throughout our district. And whereas appropriate recognition of this individual's dedicated and devoted service shall come to the attention of the entire community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Portage Public Schools takes great pleasure in recognizing the contributions of this individual and expresses its sincere gratitude for her contributions to Portage Public Schools and further wishes her a healthy, happy, and rewarding retirement. Proclaim this 24th day of June 2024 by the Portage Public Schools Board of Education. Any comments?
Yeah, wish her the best. Many thanks.
Yeah, we certainly wish Tammy the best and thank her for all the good work she's done for kids in our district. All those in favor of approving the retiree proclamation for Tammy Carmen Hoffman, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes and the retiree proclamation is approved. Our last item tonight to approve is a new administrator appointment. You received a revised note page with a motion, page 92. Is there a motion, please?
Mr. President, I move that the Board of Education approve the appointment of Dr. Ryan Miller as the new Director of Technology for Portage Public Schools for the 2024-25 school year as presented.
school year as presented.
Thank you, Emily. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Terry.
Brad would normally do this, but Brad is out of, out of state for a while, and so I get the, the honor to do this. We're really happy to welcome Ryan back. He spent seven years with us, working in the tech department and working on the student information side primarily, the Skyward system. He was all things Skyward for us. And he left and, and took a tech director positions at Battle Creek Public Schools. And I guess in the meantime, he's worked on his, on his doctorate, finished his doctorate while he's been gone, and we're just happy that he's interested in coming back to us. So went through a very thorough interview process. We had some great candidates, both internal and external. We kept narrowing the field down, and, you know, Ryan just rose to the top, so we're happy to recommend him to come back and, and get started as soon as possible, so.
Very good. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the new administrator appointment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The new administrator appointment is approved, and we welcome Dr. Ryan Miller back to Portage Public Schools. With that, our work is completed, and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Randy.